Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. It's not on yet, am I? It's all right, he'll get us, he'll get us. There it is. We will call the meeting to order, please, roll call. Please.
Beno.
Here.
Schnelly.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Smithman.
Here.
Mar.
Here.
Bush.
Here.
Holda.
Here.
Mojeski. And Molsan is excused tonight.
Thank you.
Before we start, Greg, I see everyone's microphones. If they could just pull your microphone close to you and point it at you, that'll help out our OCA person a lot. Yep.
Thank you. First item in the agenda is, besides roll call, excuse me, approval of amendments of October 6, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, great.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second by Beno.
We have a second by Beno, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next item is public appearances under community input. We have a number of people here tonight. In this segment, we will, listen, have people, if you want to address the commission on anything that's on or off the agenda, we ask that you take a three minutes maximum. In many instances, we will not be able to necessarily respond to your comments, but we'll listen to what you have to say. There are other items later on the agenda that maybe we can get to, but I'm going to remind everybody, we did have a public hearing last month on the new development from Veridian, and that is not, that public hearing is no longer ongoing, it's already finished, it's done. So if you want to comment, that's fine, but then we're going to proceed with some other business with it later. So anybody who has any comments tonight? Yes, ma'am, come on up. Just give us your name, please, and address, and just tell us what you want, tell us about them.
Hi, I'm Bridgette Nettishine, I live at 603 Prairie Grass Road. And I would like to actually address Agenda Item 8D. This is the preliminary plat approval for Phase 2 of Levelette in Augusta in the Bergamont condo development. This item was on the agenda last month and was tabled to this month due to a few open questions, I'm not sure if that's me, that the planning commission had. In the letter of recommendation from the planner, three items were identified as answered by the developer. They were around mailbox location, the potential for a through road, and visitor parking. However, one additional item was raised at the meeting last time, and I did not see it in the planner's recommendation, and that was the stormwater drainage issue. This item was, I do not see anything in the packet to indicate that the stormwater survey from an engineer has been completed, so I don't believe there's an answer to those questions. As background, last month, Mr. Rao pointed out that the stormwater drainage has been a significant concern for the homeowners affected near this property development. Excuse me, because it's not currently routed the way that the approval to route that drainage to the northwest corner of the property.
No, that's not your fault.
Actually, if you move the microphone closer to you, I still help.
Oh, okay. So, as we discussed last month, the drainage is supposed to go to the northwest corner of that lot. Currently, 100% of the drainage is going to the northeast corner. It is draining behind the homes on Prairie Grass and actually in between the homes on Prairie Grass. It ultimately goes down to Meadowview Park and occasionally floods out the mulch and shoots that into the street. Mr. Rao asked the developers if they had looked into the stormwater concerns, and in their response, the developer indicated that they have hired engineers but have not gotten anything back yet from them, and that they are aware of potential drainage issues but have not gotten that far. First, I'd like to note for the planning commission, this isn't a potential issue, this does exist. In fact, if you were to look at the aerial, you can actually see a trench that has weaved its way through that lot due to the water flowing to the northeast corner. During last month's commission, or during last month's session, two commission members, I believe it was Molsan and I think Meyer, indicated that they were uncomfortable per approving the preliminary plat at that time without some information on the stormwater plan. I do not see any information in the recommendation or in the packet to indicate that a plan has been developed. At the time, there was mention of concerns that there could need to be swales or berms placed to get that water to flow properly, and that could affect the placement of the number of position, or the number of units or where they need to be positioned. I share this concern. Currently, the north and east sides of the property have significant tree cover. There's quite a few very old oak trees and a lot of aspens growing in there, and that does actually help slow down water for us, so it's not as bad as it could be. But given the placement of these lots, all those trees will need to come down, and that will have a pretty immediate effect on the amount of runoff as it will be grassed and it will go, you know, faster through there. Additionally, this is a pretty significant amount of impervious surface into that lot, which will also increase the runoff. So I think this is a pretty serious issue to be addressed. I do not believe that the park structure or the homes were ever intended or designed to carry this stormwater load, and I am concerned if it's not addressed prior to the preliminary plat being approved, we could be locked into certain things that maybe can't be undone. So I guess that's, that's where my concern is, is if we approve this preliminary plat before we know what will happen with the stormwater. But I do want to say too, that I want to make it clear, I am not against this development. I really sympathize with the village's need to create new development and to improve our revenue structure. I just want to make sure we do it in a way that doesn't end up eating up most of that revenue in, you know, homeowner flood mitigation and stormwater mitigation in the park. So I would respectfully request not a long-term delay, just a short delay, and compel the developer to provide that stormwater information so that the, the plan can be certain that it will not have an adverse effect on the existing homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you. I assure you, we will watch it.
Oh, yeah.
Closely. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Hi, Judy.
I'm Judy Knudsen, 1004 Finn Castle Street in Orioh. I'm also talking about the Bergamont new condos, Phase 2. Again, we are not against it. I'm not going to go in and get into it because she covered all of it. But I do have a group in the back that I told them I would talk, so I'm talking. The only other thing is, we would still like to see the road go through onto Augusta, and the water is really a big thing for us. So, that's what I need. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Hello.
Hi there.
My name's Bob Whitehead, I live at 1050 North Perry Parkway, and I'm here to talk a little bit about the proposed development. I know there was a public hearing at the last meeting. We still have some concerns. We did get a chance to look at the revised plan that Veridian had submitted, and we noticed that very little was done to address the idea of the high-density housing, the twin homes and row homes that were added to North Perry Parkway. We continue to have a concern about this. In your comprehensive plan, that was updated in August of this year, there's a percentage given for the amount of those types of housing that can be added, and also states that if you are looking to exceed those numbers, that the village should look with extra scrutiny at any additional plans. We don't feel that the short amount of time given to the meeting last time and the lack of input from the community amounts to extra scrutiny as outlined in your plan. We also feel that other neighborhoods have and are being given the opportunity for input to buy a developer before plans are going, go to the developer. In fact, the residents of Autumn Woods were, received a letter from the village indicating that the first step in the process to gather input prior to the developer making plans. We feel that this is unfair treatment for our neighborhood because we were not given an opportunity to give input. My wife spoke to Elise Cruz, and she indicated that that was not legally required. However, you have set a precedence by doing this for other neighborhoods, and by not doing that for this neighborhood, that's an unfair treatment of our neighborhood not to have input, especially when this is a pretty major change from what was originally planned when we bought our lot. It's a lot of additional, additional housing, and it's also a lot of additional traffic. By adding 60 extra lots, if you figure that at least, most of those people at least have one car, that's over 120 more cars passing our house on a daily basis, in addition to what was already going to be there. We are urging you to stay within the parameters that are outlined in your plan, but if you are choosing to, to vary this, then we would ask that you move that, the row homes and twin homes, to a different part of the addition where they're not adjacent to the single-family homes. There's, there's a lot of other area within that, that, within that area that, that those could, could, could exist. For example, along where proposed lots 20, 12 to 24 are being proposed, if you put them along the back edge there, they wouldn't be adjacent to any of the existing single-family homes. It would also break up traffic because you wouldn't have all of that traffic driving right down North Perry Parkway. So, we feel that if you're going to add that type of housing and in the amount that you're looking to add, we feel that it could be done in a way that doesn't affect the, the houses that are already, the single-family homes that are already there.
Thank you. Thanks.
Good evening. Scott Hagan at 1076 North Perry Parkway. I'm also here to talk about the proposed Veridian development. Yeah, I'll start out and just say, I am disappointed, concerned. You know, there is a revised plan, but when you take into account the feedback that, that the residents provided at the last meeting, two board members provided last meeting, all of which we asked to consider moving the location of those row houses. None of that was taken into consideration. They added, they added a single home site as a step down on North Perry. But as the board chair indicated, the village has always held other developers accountable for including a minimum of three similar-sized home lots as a transition. That didn't occur. They added one, and then they added two higher-density lots. It's not a minimum three-lot step down. You know, and like Bob said, you know, why are we being treated differently? You know, I also reviewed the comprehensive plan and noticed that, that it does state that, that there's, in a development, there should be a maximum of 10% twin home, and this exceeds that, so that wasn't taken into consideration, and there wasn't, in my mind, ample discussion around if we were to exceed that, what that might look like. You know, and the other thing is, you know, in, in reviewing the, the meeting minutes and the video from last time, you know, Veridian knows this is controversial, you know, they even admitted, you know, moving the duplexes to the other side of the development, they're going to have the same issue. But what is that issue? You know, I think we, we know it's not favorable to have that up against an existing neighborhood, so even more reason to build that into another area of the development. You know, we also learned, as Bob mentioned, that Veridian turned down the opportunity to hold a neighborhood listening session. So that, that doesn't speak a whole lot that this is a community effort. You know, and like we've said over and over, we're not against this type of housing. You know, we understand the village, you know, there is a need to have, you know, more, more choice in housing selection. You know, housing prices keep going up, you know, so there, there is the need, we understand that. But why does the burden have to be solely on our, our neighborhood? When there's other subdivisions going up, you know, has this same ask been, been asked of those other subdivisions to include this type of housing?
Can you close it up, Scott?
What's that?
Can you close it up?
Yeah, yeah, I'm almost done here. You know, like, like Bob mentioned, you know, not including the additional lots off of Mary Hill, you know, the, the prior conceptual plan had approximately 140 additional single-family homes. So now we're talking 210. You know, that's a considerable increase in density. That's a pretty big change. You know, I, I guess I'd want to understand the impact this will have on our utilities, sewer and water, fire, police, along with our schools. I know Elise at the last meeting mentioned that she talked to the school board, and they indicated that they'd be able to absorb this. But, you know, with, with the, with the referendum that's coming up and with the, the increase of 10% tax levy that's proposed, I mean, we want to understand that this isn't going to put an additional burden on, on the taxpayers. You know, and just to wrap this up, I, like I mentioned, I'm frustrated and disappointed. You know, I'm, I'm really asking the board to please not approve this plan and ask the developer to work with the community on a plan that's mutually beneficial. You know, I think, I think that's, that's not a lot to ask, especially when we're considering a change of this magnitude, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Thank you.
Hi, public speaking is not my thing, so pardon me.
That don't, just don't worry about it.
My name's Jessica Williams, I live at 1026 North Perry Parkway. I'm here to also talk about the Veridian addition, and basically, I'd just like to echo what my neighbors here have said. I don't have quite the numbers that they do, but I, I guess I just can't understand why these need to be along our road when there is a lot of other areas within this, within this division where we could move them along the back, where it wouldn't affect any current existing home members. There's a lot of space in there that they could be placed without, you know, impacting anyone else there. So, that's really my biggest thing, and also just the infrastructure to, that our town and village has to support this, this growth. We have a few restaurants, we have a grocery store that's open until 7 o'clock on a Sunday night. We don't, I don't know why with the push to bring in so many new people, unless the infrastructure is going to grow around it. And that's about all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody else is itching to stand up here a few minutes ago, there we go.
Hi, my name is Jamie White, and I live at 1010 North Perry Parkway. So I am here about the Greenview Preserve and Veridian proposal. You know, again, reiterating a lot of the things that the neighbors have said, but I guess my disappointment is that we were not offered any sort of community meeting with Veridian or any other developer. I do feel like that would be really beneficial when adding on to an existing neighborhood as a way to have these conversations before we feel like our backs are up against the wall and we're pleading our case at the last minute. I, I think it would say a lot to the development and just the community aspect of it if we would have a chance to discuss these things ahead of time, and, you know, maybe come up with a good solution on where the twin homes should go rather than at the extension of a, an existing neighborhood that wasn't anticipating that. I also think, if it's possible, maybe the village should consider changing their policies to make this a requirement for developers to hold community meetings with established neighborhoods when developments are being proposed, instead of giving it as an option. I mean, I understand if it's an option, why have this hassle if you don't have to do it? So I think it might be beneficial all around to have these conversations ahead of time. Yeah, those are pretty much the new points that I wanted to bring up with it.
Thank you, Jamie, thank you, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi there, Chris Hinckel, 1049 North Perry Parkway. Again, I'm concerned about the Veridian development as well, and I'm not going to repeat everything that my neighbors already talked about because they spoke so eloquently, but I really urge the commission and the board to reconsider this plan and really think hard about it and know that it's just not two or three neighbors that are concerned about it, it's the entire neighborhood on North Perry Parkway and the surrounding area. And I think, I think Veridian can do better, and I think the commission can do better to really look strongly and closely at this plan, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is James Conrad, I am at 1009 North Perry Parkway. Just here to echo many of the same sentiments, the outreach to the local community with Veridian, and the step-down properties are my main qualms with the plan. But again, keep it brief, I'm echoing many of the same sentiments, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, you sure?
All right.
Let's move on then. Next item is the, I don't, let's get back to the area. Unfinished business, none, none, okay, new business, which is discuss, item 8A is discuss and consider recommendation of village board for revised general development plan at the Greenview Preserve neighborhood parcels, et cetera, et cetera, by Veridian Homes. Veridian, you want to make some more comments?
You can go straight to your PowerPoint.
All right, good evening, everybody, good to see you again. We were here about a month ago, and just regarding the, the neighborhood meeting component, different municipalities have different requirements. Oregon does not require it, but obviously, we, it's something that, that we encourage is to get neighborhood feedback, hence the fact that when we presented at the last meeting, we received what we thought was the neighborhood feedback, and did take efforts this time around to address those comments as best we can. And we're, we're actually excited to show you tonight a revised plan that took a lot of time and effort to address many of those comments. In, in particular, I think that the biggest concern being, we call, what we call twin homes, what others might call duplexes, and, and the correlations that go with that, I'm not sure, the concerns that are tied to that, we'll kind of talk about here as well. But with me tonight, Matt Brink from Veridian, Brian Munson, our planner, and Dan Day, our engineer. A few of you were not here at our last presentation, we're not going to go into that, but what we are presenting tonight is just a, a development that we are very excited about and very proud of, which includes a diverse range of housing that is, is in a scale that Oregon has not seen before. We are going to have entry-level housing, move-up housing, and luxury housing, all within the same neighborhood. So instead of the typical segregated housing by clusters and by price points, everyone will be in the same neighborhood. Again, that's entry-level, move-up, and luxury, all in the same neighborhood. What qualifies as, as entry-level housing? Some of that is a twin-style house. And when I say twin, other people refer to as a duplex. These are not for rent. Every single twin will be for sale. The twins' garages will be in the rear of the property, so all you will see are front elevations. We'll kind of show you pictures of what that ultimately looks like. It's a little different, it doesn't exist in Oregon, but it is something that is much appreciated and built throughout Dane County that, that you're more than welcome to go check out. So, that being said, let's get into what changed from the last time we were up here.
So we'll start with what was. So here you can see the original submittal, and I'll focus on the areas where amendments were made based on the feedback received. And there's really three components. The first is the land use transition along Perry Parkway. We incorporated some single-family homes along the block end, as well as comparable housing next to the existing homes, so that you have a single-family transition into the site. And to do that, we redistributed the twin homes throughout the neighborhood. So there are opportunities to have those houses within the neighborhood in close proximity, but also offering the diversity of housing. The other component that we were able to add was to add about two and a half acres of park space in the southeast corner of the site. Previously, we had a small cul-de-sac eyebrow, we removed that, reconfigured the roads, increased the park space back there with both, creates a, a very interesting connection between existing parks, Rustic Vineyards to the east, and then the, the park in the neighborhood to the south of Richards Road. But we were also able to preserve some of the trees that are on the site right now by doing that. So those three changes ended up with a plan that looks like this. And again, as you can see, the twin homes, the shown in purple, have been distributed throughout the neighborhood. And then the park space added in the southeast corner, abutting some of the existing homes on Perry Parkway, as well as Richards Roads to the south. And then the transition on Perry Parkway, where we've integrated five single-family lots before you get to the twin homes further up. And, and the trees. Yep, so the trees that, there on the backs of, so, I don't think my, yeah, there we go, thank you. Yes, so those trees exist and would be preserved in that park space there. We also have incorporated a trail connection which would connect to the south. Potentially, there's a right-of-way that's there today that would allow a trail connection to the south and to the trails that go to the park immediately south, and a trail connection over to the east to Rustic Vineyards.
And the single-family home site.
Yep. And I would also note, adjacent, the very first home site adjacent to the existing housing on the west side of Prairie Parkway is a single-family home. That is the, one of the largest lot series in this neighborhood, would be a comparable-scale house, comparable-scale yard, and a price point that is at or above the existing homes adjacent to that stretch of Prairie Parkway. To give a little bit of context of the surroundings, again, twin homes in this neighborhood are not a unique function, and, and that's really by design. You see here, within a block of this project in many directions, existing twin homes integrated into the neighborhood, and that's something we've done in our neighborhoods as well throughout Dane County, because through careful architectural design, configuration of lots, massing of the homes, you can integrate different housing types within close proximity to each other. In fact, we've got some pictures further down that does that.
And just for point of reference, this is Mary Hill. Highlighted in green are duplexes, front-load garage duplexes. If you'll take note, there's 10 of them in a row on Vineyard, there's six of them in a row in New Hampshire. We are asking for seven, and they're across from a park, not directly across from a single-family, similar to what's been done in the neighborhood as it exists today.
The other aspect, as we mentioned, was the extension of the park, and apologize, it looks like the graphic got shifted a little bit before I set it over, but it shows that through trail connections, we can connect.
I did that, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. We can connect three park spaces through trails, off-street, to expand the usability of all those spaces by creation of that new park space in the southeast corner. So just to walk through a little bit again about the types of homes that are being proposed here, and again, all the photos you see in this presentation are from Veridian neighborhoods. These aren't an exercise in theory, it's an exercise in practice. We've been doing this for more than 20 years of integrating different types of housing, different price points of housing within the context of a single neighborhood. So you can see here, a photo from before, but we added a few more. This being from Smith's Crossing, Birchwood Point in the west side of Madison, and in Wanakee. And I would note that in each of these situations, the twin homes are immediately across the street and around the corner from single-family homes. Done in a way intentionally so that you create a fabric where you can see here, the garages are in the back, and all the twin homes are alley-loaded intentionally because that presents the fronts of the houses in a way that's very comparable to single-family homes in terms of overall width and character. In terms of the alley-loaded single-family, again, some examples from existing neighborhoods, whether it's Birchwood Point, again, illustrating how you can integrate twin homes on an alley, front-load single-family, alley-loaded single-family in ways that really create opportunities for different price points and formats to be integrated into one neighborhood and support each other, so that there's not a large disparate change between the units. Because if you look at the houses in this picture, I'll go back to the houses in this picture, the houses themselves, the livable portions of the house are identical. The difference is we've taken the garage from the side and put it to the back. But the biggest difference is the ability then to offer price diversity and choices for people. Not everybody's going to want to live on an alley, we understand that. That's why you see a variety of houses in all of our neighborhoods, because we want to make community that appeals to everybody's needs for housing within that community and offer opportunities for homeownership. And that's why all of the units being proposed in this neighborhood are for-sale product. As Chris mentioned, even the twin homes are attached to single-family on individual lots that will be for sale and allowing for price diversity within the neighborhood. So after all of that description, that gets us back to the concept, and as Chris said, we've spent a lot of time listening to the comments that were made, creating that transition along Perry Parkway, and reading- were made, creating that transition along Perry Parkway, and redistributing some of the density within the neighborhood. But we're confident that the overall neighborhood will fit seamlessly into the existing neighborhood and the fabric of the whole community.
And just in conclusion, a few other points. We will be building on every single one of the home sites. We do not develop and sell lots to other builders. Veridian will build on every site and control the architectural standards and design on every site as well. The roads that you see there on the plan that are connected to the north, they are arterial roadways. Those that, do you want to define what an arterial roadway is?
Yep, just to clarify, I misspoke earlier. It was a, that Perry Parkway is a collector roadway. It is designed to accommodate some of that sub-neighborhood traffic and eventually connect up to the school to the north.
And then lastly, our twins, they are not condos. Their fee's simple. There's a property line down the middle of them. This enables first time home buyers to qualify for financing to purchase them. There's condo restrictions when it comes to mortgages that is left over from the Great Recession, where they were really shunned upon, and all the burdens that came with the condo designation and HOAs that are now bankrupt. That's why we work to avoid that by doing a fee simple for sale house. Also, we are selling quite a few of these around Dane County right now. Typical buyer is moving out of a market rate apartment typically into this. It is their first home purchase. And we do not, once we release for sale, we do not go out to bid. It is a, whatever price we listed at, that's the first person that comes in with a qualified offer gets that house. And so we do not get into bidding wars. We work, operate on a fixed margin business plan with this. And so by design, we try to keep all of these price points in line with what the market is dictating.
Okay. Questions, anybody? Jeff, you have anything?
Yeah, yeah, we could talk a little bit about some of the concerns over infrastructure. North Perry Parkway is a 70-foot wide right of way. And, you know, as, as in a, you know, it's kind of like one of our, we have kind of one major belt line around the village, Alpine Parkway to North Perry Parkway. And so that is part of its long-range design. It'll eventually go up around the school and into that roundabout that's up there, that's at MM, or M, excuse me. Sanitary has been looked at, and we are confident, plenty confident, with the capacity we have for sanitary, for water. Like we said, we've actually pushed higher density just because it's something that our village doesn't have right now. We don't have entry level, single family homes in our, in our village. And we've seen a lot of very nice developments, and we're talking about one tonight, another one tonight. But, you know, a lot of those homes are being built in the five, six, eight, $800,000 range. And so, you know, I think this is a, this is a good fit for our village and the location. I totally understand when, when you've been living for so long and you've had farm field behind you, it's very tough to, to see that density increase. But I do appreciate the, the addition of the park. I think that's a better layout than that little teardrop island that we were going to have to plow around. But I like the, I like the connection, the thought of the connection from Rustic Vineyards to this park, and then eventually path down there to Mary Hill Park. But, no, I think, you know, infrastructure wise, yep, everyone always looks at this and says it's going to be just a madhouse of traffic. Surprisingly, not as much as it usually seems to be, but I understand the concerns, definitely.
Thank you. Elise, anything?
Nope, just happy to answer any questions. I guess the one thing I would clarify with the neighborhood meeting, so there wasn't an opportunity, I did not ask Veridian if they wanted to have a neighborhood meeting, so they didn't have an opportunity to decline that, because that wasn't something that I offered. We have offered neighborhood meetings in the past. We've had a couple in the last few months and a few weeks here. From my perspective, it's more of a crowd control tactic. So we know some neighborhoods are larger. There's some developments that affect a larger group of neighbors. And so, for example, last week we had a, the change to Onridge Phases three through five, some changes to Foxborough. We had this room packed full of people, probably about 100 people or so. And it was, I think, an appropriate format to have those kind of conversations, just, you know, the same information will be presented tonight, but opportunity for the neighborhood to be here and ask their questions. And yes, in hindsight, I wish I would have offered that to them, but I just want to make sure that's not on Veridian trying to evade the neighbors or anything like that. It was more understanding that we would have, we've had several concept presentations probably since April or May with the prior to the comprehensive plan change for Veridian, and, and knowing that they would be at the meeting last month too for that public hearing. So certainly taking the feedback and happy to make that more a part of our standard procedure, but I just wanted to clarify some of the history on how that went down.
All right, okay. You want to say something?
I do.
I do, I figured you'd.
So I want to, I want to echo.
You got it.
All right, I want to echo sort of something what Jeff has said. And one of the priorities for the village board, the last five years I've been on it, has been affordability about, we talk a lot about people not being able to afford to live here. I see this as a development that addresses, perfectly addresses that, that issue. And the other thing I want to say is, I was a neighborhood president in Madison for 17 years. And if I ever got a development that every house is owner occupied, we would have been so thrilled to have that. But, and Chris, last time you mentioned, I looked at Realtor.com today. I wanted to see what, what are prices going for? And it was, it ranged from four to $600,000. And that wasn't a used house. That, or that was a used house. It wasn't a brand new house. So I think from, and I can't speak for every board member, but we did agree that this, the affordability is a priority for the village board. And I think this doesn't. So I also want to say, when I looked at it, I think the changes, you guys, from my perspective, you guys listened to the comments from last time. There's been some significant changes. Maybe not enough for some people, but, I mean, I think, I think that says something as, as you guys as a developer do that. So, that's, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Questions, comments? We got to do something here, so.
I got a question for staff, Elise specifically. One thing that was brought up by the neighbors, and I know that we have done in our comprehensive plan, is a little pinwheel of percentages of types of homes and that type of thing, densities. Does this tilt the pinwheel of Oregon dramatically or incorrectly, according to what we are looking for for demographic of home types?
Yeah. I would say not in a major way. We have several other neighborhoods, Bergamot, Highlands of Netherwood, Autumn Ridge. Those are almost all entirely single family. So I think when you take that all into perspective and realizing that out of the 210 units here in the Veridian neighborhood, only 28 are twin homes, I think that's representative of kind of where we expect to be for our housing mix across the village, and taking into account all the other housing that's coming online on other ends of the village.
Thank you. I didn't think that it was going to dramatically change what we have, but I know that it was a concern, and I wanted to see where we stood. I think that, first of all, I like this new plan. I think that you've made some really good changes to it. I think that you listened to the concerns. You have provided some buffer and, and single family adjacent to the existing single family. I like the twin homes across from the park with a alley loaded situation, instead of having all of those driveways emptying on to the road. I think that's a far safer situation than putting a whole bunch of single family homes, or even putting typical duplexes, twin homes, whatever semantics you want to use. Greg has brought up a couple of good points about some, some things that I'm sure he's going to bring up. You've got the single family home, that's, that's sort of loaned lot right there. Is the setback, would that be, on that lot, would that be the same as what's comparable to the homes adjacent? And if not, would you be open to allowing that one to have the same setback, or make it match?
Yeah. Right now, that one is zoned with a 20-foot setback, but there's enough room on that lot. If it wanted, it wanted to slide it back, we'd be fine to accommodate a bigger front yard.
Thank you.
I have one quick question. On, on these homes, like on these, are you still alley loaded, it's just a side alley loaded garage?
Correct.
Okay. Same with these two?
Yes.
I'm looking at my little map I've got here. It doesn't look the same as what you've got up there. It looks like, I forgot my glasses in the car. 100, is that 100? That corner, thank you, buddy. Your voice off. Yeah, that's better. Your nose is, your nose is not as big as mine. 155. See, 155, which is that corner lot we just talked about, and, wow. And it appeared to me that 40 and 41 and 42 are also the same color, but they're not. Is that correct?
That's correct. A couple of things we did on those. So that one would be a traditional front loaded, single family, there in the corner.
I'm sorry, 1, 155?
Yes, 155 would be a traditional front load. That's about a 77-foot wide lot, for reference on that, the block, the rest of the block. They range from 80 feet wide to 90 feet wide.
Right.
Across the street, 41 is actually an oversized alley lot, and we did that intentionally to increase the side yard on that, so that you have some comparable spacing as you go across the block between those homes and to the houses to the south. So that would be, again, dedicated space more for the yard spacing of that lot. And the same, it would be a single family. And then the next three lots past that are also single family homes.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Say it again. 41, 40, yeah, 39, 38 are single family homes, is that what you said?
That is correct. It's not until you get, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses. 37 is the first twin.
Right.
So, purple.
Correct, yeah, okay.
So we would have five single family homes along that block face before the twin homes.
Correct. Okay, the other concerns I have. Let's shift over to the west and then go down to, and this is Stoddard Drive, excuse me, Stoddard Drive. We have some existing homes there. Standard lots, standard SR4 lots. Those lots are an 80-foot or whatever. We have 30-foot front yard setback on them. And now you're looking at lots 141 through 146, and then lots 123 down to 128. According to your documentation, it shows that those are a 20-foot front yard setback.
Yes.
They're not going to line up with the existing homes. Can you line up with those existing homes? Can we make those 30-foot front yard setbacks? Because if you don't, it's, it's, I don't think it's appropriate to do that to the neighbors.
Well, a couple of things on those lots. They are, yes, they are narrower lots than, than the houses to the west, but they do have the same depth in terms of the rear yard lineups. So that does open up the opportunity that as we go across those block faces, we could kind of do a staggered block reveal, so that it's not a, as you said, one lot's at 30, one lot's at 20, but perhaps, you know, a couple feet difference as we go to the east from the existing homes. We could probably accommodate some additional front yards to, again, make that transition gradual and something that wouldn't be noticed amongst the existing homes.
I see, because what you're really doing, that's, I got to look at the colors closer. Actually, 141 through 145 are the same as our 126 through 128.
Correct.
The reason I picked out those lots, because there is a turn in Stoddard Drive. I would feel much more comfortable that you have 20 or 30-foot front yard setbacks on all those homes. And can that be accomplished? And I, you know, I'd stagger him, doesn't work for me, so.
Well, thankfully, Dan Day just hopped up here with a plot that tells our lot depths, and we do have the ability to do that.
Yeah, it looks like we could do that on 141 to 146, go to 30-foot setback. And then on 147, we could go to the 20, right after the jump there. I think that would make some sense. And then on the north side, I think likewise, we could do that 30-foot setback on 124 and 128. And then I would suggest we do a, like a 25 on 123, and then go to the 1, go to 20 on 122 and beyond.
You're right. Then that transition would be at the curve point or the open space.
Yeah.
Now, you're also going to the same situation, and I didn't, I should have driven up there, and I didn't today. You've got the same situation along Mary Hill Drive. And I didn't, I was going to, and I didn't, I don't have time. 169, 129, those, you got four on the.
I think, I think on this one, you actually, since this is a corner lot, they probably orientated the 30-foot along Stoddard, or that's Prairie, Prairie mound.
Could be, I don't remember.
This is already a 20, you can kind of see the home built there, is already a 20-foot right there.
On the side yard. So you're, you're considering Mary Hill as a side yard setback.
Well, it's how they orientated, because on, on corner lots, it, it can come down to how they are orientating the house. You can actually end up with, just like what you're kind of trying to avoid, you could end up with a 20-foot house on the corner, and then 30-foot for additional homes behind it.
True. What about the one that would be on the southwest, southeast, we, south, north, northeast corner of that intersection?
That one would be, the garage, I think, opens up under Mary Hill on that one.
Yeah.
Does it? Which then would be, that setback would be 30.
Well, you may have a garage there, may have a front yard setback that matches this, and then the garage with a side load off of here. That happens sometimes.
But don't we also, that at that point have, if it's a driveway, you have to have at least room for an extra vehicle? No?
Well, room for an extra vehicle, but that's 20-foot.
Should have driven down here.
Going to look and see if the Google Maps satellite is pretty updated, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's pretty much Veridian, yeah. Oh, there you go.
So that northeast corner, that Stoddard Drive, Mary Hill, that house is kind of a Z shape, but it, yeah, the driveway does face Mary Hill.
Okay, okay.
Perhaps it could be done, you know, a lot or two in.
Is that a duplex?
No.
That's.
Yeah, the duplex is on the southwest.
Yeah, right, southwest corner.
I think that it's, the impact is minimized because it's just a single house at the intersection.
Yeah.
Especially if, if we're talking about one home.
Right.
That might be, that might cause a change in a setback. So I, I think that it's a valid question to ask, but I think that I'm okay with that, the way that it is they're proposing.
Yeah. So what we could do is, we could propose a text amendment during the recording with staff, that would codify these setbacks, that would note the lots, and talk about how these would get put into the zoning. So they'd have a different front yard setback by the zoning. And that would be the mechanism we prefer to try to control for that.
Yeah, when we take the, if we take the GDP and ordinance form to the village board, we can incorporate these changes, and we'll just call out those lot numbers that, where we wanted to have a, an increased front yard setback, that step down.
Okay. We still have some residents that aren't happy, so how do we address that?
I've never done anything where residents are both happy.
Not the right job.
I understand that, I understand that, I understand that.
I don't know, I, I think that it's a good plan. I think they've answered the request of the neighborhood. I live in this neighborhood and have duplexes across the street, and it's not bad. And it's not a bad situation. They're not bad people. And having them just up the street from you is not a bad thing. And having this sort of integrated approach to a subdivision is good, and a price point that people can move into from market. and a price point that people can move into for market-rate apartments is wonderful. So, I'm in support of this, and if you're looking for a motion, I would make it.
Um, okay, we have had, motion been put on the table, so we have to deal with this, so we have a second motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so let's have some discussion, we're not done with, ready to vote yet, so.
I'll, uh, pick up on where John left off. Some people maybe look down at the thought of living next to a duplex. I've lived in a, a mixed neighborhood with duplexes for a couple of decades.
Pulling towards you.
Yep. Echoing, uh, I spent a couple of decades with duplexes all around me, and I found it to be a wonderful experience, a very diverse neighborhood. You get everything from young, single people to young professionals to typical families to empty nesters, retirees, you know, all of the above, and it's been a great experience, so, I, you know, I understand that people haven't lived around duplexes, maybe have a fear of it, but, um, it's been a good experience for me to have, have those kind of mixed neighborhoods. So, I'm, I'm in favor of that part, 13 or 14 duplexes in this entire neighborhood really, really shouldn't, uh, shouldn't be that big a concern. And their owner occupied, so.
True. Yes, Larry?
I'd, I'd like to second what we've heard here from the other members of the committee, commission, that I, I think this is a good concept of residential development for Oregon. It's worked in other communities close to us in recent years. I agree with Scott that the mixed, the mixture is not, is not, uh, is, is a good thing, and I think you learn, you learn from that, and, uh, I like the, uh, what's been done with the parks to expand the park space and, uh, and adds more of the smaller parks in, that's, is a good thing. They become community gathering points as, uh, as well as, for all ages of, of people, and, uh, there's, there's some safety, I think, in, in having the proposal set up with, uh, Architectural Review Committee to, to tend the standards, to make sure that, uh, that those, each individual unit that comes in is, goes before that committee, and, uh, so I, I think that with, uh, with the standards and the architecture that's in here, uh, with maturity of, of landscaping and, and trees and so forth, that, uh, this is all going to blend together and, and line up, and, uh, with existing community, existing neighborhoods in the community, and it'll be assimilated, uh, well, and 20 years from now, we'll really be thankful for it.
Okay, thank you. Eric, anything, nothing?
A lot of good comments, I think it's important to note that the number of lines on the paper, especially if the twin homes are kind of deceiving. I think there's, you know, there's 14 buildings, there's.
That's seven twi- that's seven twin homes, so that's.
So, I think it, that helps a little bit to visualize that.
So, there's the, there is gonna be a small space between them, yeah, between every two of them.
I'll just say, I think it's, in reality, it's gonna look less congested than it does on this map right now.
Okay, okay.
I support it.
Matthew, anything?
Yeah, I don't know if I get to vote tonight on this.
You, you, yes, you do.
Oh, I do, okay. Yeah, I think, you know, it's an improvement over the proposal from last month, and I agree with the comments here that, you know, they, you know, took the board commission's concerns into account and sort of, you know, blended the, you know, the twin homes in better, and, I mean, yeah, I think it should be, it looks good to me, so.
Thank you. Now, um, before we vote, I have a question. We said, okay, we can go ahead, this is a, this is a, uh, GDP, and notes can be made to staff or whatever and changed, how do we see that? How I'm trying to put myself properly here, in other words.
We include that, those changes for those specific lots, I have them all written down, we can make sure that Joy has them written down in the minutes, and then I'll be, in the next few days, preparing the ordinance for the village board for their, you know, December 14th meeting, and so those changes would be called out as part of their flexibilities that they're requesting, um, for those lots, that would just be.
Is it in the ordinance?
Yes, yep, so then it's in the ordinance, it's recorded, um, that's how we've been doing our GDPs lately, so it.
Where, where I'm going with this, and, and I think you understand, because what happens is that 10, 15, 20 years from now, this gets lost. Not, it doesn't matter at this time, because it's gonna be built correctly, correctly, but I, I wanna make sure that this is done properly.
That's why we do the ordinances now, rather than getting lost in property files and minutes and.
All right. Have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Just, uh, just another comment about, I mean, I, I really do think this is, this is what the board, the, what we, what we're, we're going in the right direction in terms of affordability. I know, you, you, you know, you could argue that it's, they're still expensive, but they're less expensive in terms of what we see now. At, at least it gives folks, I think, a chance who wanna, who wanna come to the village and own, own a home, it gives them that opportunity.
Okay, again, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Review and possible approval of the SIP. Review and possible approval of the SIP, implementation plan for Greenview Reserve applicant Veridian Homes.
So, I include a little bit of information in the staff report, um, at the top of the GDP item, but, uh, there are some pages in their proposal that are pages, I think, 16 through 19 of their submittal that go through the Architectural Review Board, um, set up, um, their rule of seven to have, um, the facades not repeat, um, closer than every seven homes. So, um, Veridian's still here, if there's any questions about kind of SIP, what lighting looks like in the alley, alleys, they've done this in other locations, so I'm sure they, um, will be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
I don't know, anybody have any questions on this? No?
Dan, did you write the legal description on this?
Not me.
Zoe.
Yeah, this is very. Well, do you have any discussion on this thing, or should we proceed with the approval, recommendation over the approval of the SIP?
All the standards have been met for the SIP that were required?
Yeah.
Everything?
Okay.
Then we need a motion, recommend.
I'll move approval.
Second.
The motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item 8C, review and po- and consider recommendation of village board for a preliminary plat for the Greenview Preserve app, uh, network, neighborhood applicant, Veridian. Okay, um, one of the things that I get really sticky about is having, and that's why I asked the questions. If we're gonna have a preliminary plat, I don't want a lot of contingencies, and I say I don't want, I should say that, that, I don't believe the commission wants contingencies. We've dealt with those things years and years ago, and it's no longer, I think, beneficial to the village to do that. So, do we have any contingencies we have to discuss on this, other than the setbacks? What changes should we have on this thing?
Yeah, setbacks are in the plat.
Well, the setbacks would be, see, I mean, they do have the setbacks down here in the.
Yeah, I guess, Dan, do you wanna kind of answer how you would like to handle?
Yeah, we will, I mean, if you wanna make a condition of approval, that we change the detail on the preliminary plat of the setbacks, we will certainly do that, that's, I mean, that's obvious, but the discussion that we just had with the zone.
You know, I think one of the things that recently, when we approved Highlands of Netherwood, remember, that was a, a very odd-looking subdivision. I think everyone kind of did the old lab to the side, you know, kind of look when we saw it. And that has individual setbacks for every lot, based on a kind of a coving, I think is what they called it at the time. And, um, they actually just showed the setbacks on the plat.
On the final plat?
On the, well, yes, on, on the plat, yes, so.
We're, we're ones not to promote that. Um, because setbacks are a zoning issue versus a plating issue. Um, and then you can't change them if something changes in the village ordinances 30 years from now. So, I mean, generally, we support doing it as part of the zoning document versus on the face of the final plat. Here, we show them on the preliminary plat, because that's what's required by ordinance, um, and it's a good, good thing to have, just to facilitate, everybody's got contacts, so we can easily change those on the preliminary plat, because it's not a recorded document.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause this is the standard for the lot, like, you know.
Right.
But you wouldn't wanna do a diagram for each lot as, well, no, you will have them, a 30, 'cause you could just do another one and have it as 30 feet, yeah.
Yeah, I'll do separate.
District one transition lots or something like that.
I was thinking we were doing a step back, but then I remember that was not the plan.
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide additional details on the preliminary plat to show those, just so that it's clear for everybody.
Will that be done in time for the com- the village board meeting then, or will that be ready?
Well, it's, I, I look at that as well as anything else.
No, I, that's the point I'm making, because there's, then there's a conflict, because what, what does the village board approve? What gets documented, what gets put in the files, and then, and then all of a sudden, this other document shows, I say, wait a minute, there's a change or a difference in setbacks.
Well, we, you guys have routinely approved, uh, items contingent upon meeting the requirements of the comments of the plan commission and staff and engineers.
Not too much lately, not too much lately.
But, well.
Right, but the preliminary plat isn't, isn't the recorded document, so, a couple of things, we have time, you know, we're not putting the packet together until next Wednesday, the ninth, for the village board, so I think your motion would be, update the preliminary plat, include, uh, um, you know, an illustration of the district one transition lots with the front yard setback as discussed, and then Dan would just list out lots X, Y, and Z. Those are the ones that we've called out as, um, to have a 30-foot setback, and maybe one with 25, and then Jeff and I will make sure that that gets on.
Okay, I know I'm being a little pain here, but I would feel.
I get where you're going.
My preference, I'll be honest with you, I would, my preference would be.
We know where we live.
Yeah, well, okay, my preference would be not to, not to proceed with this unless I know for a fact, I shouldn't say aye, unless we know for a fact that, that correction will be made to that document prior to it getting to the village board and part of the package that's approved by them.
It will get done.
Well, I will not put it in the packet before.
Okay.
We see that change, so.
All right, I just wanna.
And then.
Everybody understand what I'm saying here? I just, because it's just, yeah.
The guideline doesn't fix anything, it doesn't, I mean.
No, again, it's just shown as a, more of a helpful guideline of how zoning rules are affecting this neighborhood, that they would be.
But I still want it, the T's crossed and I's dotted, so.
Got it.
Another question I have, a number of years ago, we set a new ordinance on, uh, new plats listing a, uh, minimum foundation elevation and basement window elevation, where does that get calculated or shown on?
The final plat and in their, um, uh, lot elevation diagrams that they provide.
So, that would have to be on the final plat?
Yeah, it would be very difficult to show it on, yeah. And I, have you looked at maybe splitting this up into a four-panel plat at a, at a little larger scale?
Um, I believe the, uh, is it state statute that preliminary plats have to all be on one piece of paper?
Okay.
Final plats do.
I won't question you on that, I, I, but.
I'm not the surveyor, so I, I don't know for sure, but I think there's a, I think there's something to that, yeah.
Okay, hopefully, the final plat will be on.
Yes, final plat will be at a 60-scale, and, yeah, it'll be much more legible, 'cause they do let you split that up.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we need a recommendation of village board for the approval of a preliminary plat for Greenvale Preserve neighborhood with the corrections made prior to presentation to the village board.
So moved.
Motion, you have a second. We have a second by Mr. Maher, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
No contingencies.
Greg, I'll, I'll send you the updated plat when I get it from, from Dan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wow, okay. 8D, review and consideration, and consider recommendation of village board for preliminary condominium plat. I always screw this up for the whatever, da-da-da.
La Valette.
La Valette de Bergamot condo is phase two, located in the corner of Bergamot Boulevard, Augusta Drive, applicant is Fleming Development.
Hi, good evening, um, thanks for having me back, so, um, yeah, just back to discuss this preliminary plat for the condo development. Um, last meeting, I think, you know, a month or so ago, um, one of the board members had a, a thought of, bringing that road all the way through to Augusta and, and then dropping, and so, and then, so turning units 13, 14, and 15 and 16 onto the new road, and then maybe dropping unit 17 and, uh, and to, to create guest parking. We, we tried that, um, it didn't quite work, it would've caused us to lose, obviously, unit 17, and then, um, an additional, an additional lot, and so, we, we, obviously, as you can see, did not go that route. We did widen the road to 18 feet, um, which would allow us, uh, one-sided parking, so, um, you know, instead of add, instead of losing a unit, adding guest parking, we kept that unit and widened the road to allow the one-sided parking. Yeah, those, those were the, the, the concerns last meeting, and, uh, that, this is, this is, we, we tried it out, and this is how we kept it, so.
Elise, you had some comments to this.
Just a few other things to add, I know the stormwater management plan was definitely brought up a couple of times at the last meeting, has been an ongoing conversation, um, way back from some of our initial discussions about this development, um, there was, when, in kind of preparing for this meeting, um, Jake had actually initially proposed just postponing everything until our January 2023 meeting, um, when the stormwater management plan, everything would be completed, um, coming back with the GDP, SIP, the preliminary plat at that time. Whether or not you all decide to approve the preliminary plat tonight is up to you, but I thought it would be useful to, um, show you kind of the current thinking that, um, Fleming has for, uh, the layout of the road, I think, being the, the biggest change that they are requesting not to incorporate, um, so before they got a little further down the road with the engineering plans and spending that time and money, I wanted to make sure the planning commission was aware of this layout, um, the fact that the road got widened to 28 feet, we have shared this again with our fire department, they're comfortable with the layout. This is very similar to the Eagle Drive duplexes that Lake Stone built, uh, down the hill near the Bergamot townhome, so similar width, um. There were some concerns about the post office, that's really not something that we, um, you don't need to be concerned with. It's wide enough for them to get in and turn around, and I think the, the guest parking stalls and wherever the CBUs are placed, um, you know, the post office is something they usually work with directly with the developer, so, um, I, I know Judy mentioned some concerns about the, or, you know, a neighborhood preference for the road to go through, um. I'm not sure, uh, maybe they could speak a little bit more to that, but I just wanted to, I guess, have you all check in with this plan before we see it again in two months, and then you see that the road isn't going through and kind of have to, you know, start from scratch again.
Thank you. Anybody? Comments, questions?
I did a little calculating, and I think you actually lost some parking. We've got seven, seven of the driveways reduced down to 17 feet, and a minimum parking stall is 18 feet, and when you're parking in front of a garage door, that's even, probably a little tight, so 17-foot, if somebody parks in these driveways, they're gonna be hanging on to the, the. So, seventeen foot, if somebody parks in these driveways, they're gonna be hanging on to the, the drive aisle, which I don't think is a safe situation. So, you lost fourteen parking places by doing that. And then if I count roughly where I think cars would fit between all these driveways along the roadway, you may be picking up nine. So, I think you actually lost five parking places by making that change. So, I don't think it improved anything.
I mean, if we can, we can widen or lengthen the, the driveways, the seventeen-foot driveways back a foot, that would shorten up the rear yards, is what that would do.
People are gonna prefer to park in their own little private driveway as along the drive aisle, in my opinion. And like I say, you'll have more net stalls that way than what this change did.
I think the reason for widening to twenty-eight feet was the fire department had wanted you to, if you were gonna have on-street parking, you need to be at least twenty feet, twenty-eight feet, and then signed for, uh, just the one-side parking, so.
Yeah.
To echo Scott's point, I think you, we do want to push for that twenty, or eighteen-foot drive out and then just take it out of the back.
Okay.
Um, I know that that's gonna make your drainage a little bit more difficult, but that's the voodoo that you do to figure it out. Cuz, um, that backside is, is gonna get tight. And Elise, so the neighbors know, maybe I missed it. Um, this is just to sort of give us a comfort level as they move forward with their engineering. When they come back, they will have the engineering solutions for them to review and to look at.
Right, and like I said, um, again, up to you all, if you wanna approve the preliminary plat or not, you know, if you're gonna make those changes to the driveway lengths, maybe you wanna incorporate that into the preliminary plat. Um, but yeah, just a checkpoint for, for both parties to make sure that everyone's on the same page before we get into the public hearing for the GDP and, um, don't have any major changes coming.
That understood, everybody back there understood? That right now it's just sort of a check-in and your drainage concerns will be looked at, but not till they come back.
Yeah. I just have a comment on the stormwater and from our experience with Eagle Drive, um, which they've had problems back there and actually had to go back and, and make some modifications to it. Uh, with, with, with how close your setback to those lots along Prairie, Prairie View, is that right?
Prairie Crest.
Prairie Crest, thank you. Um, it's gonna be really tight to get a decent swale back there that will carry water all the way around. You may be looking at a shallow stormwater collection system with inlets, on side yards and everything like that, that will convey it all the way, say, from twelve up to eight, then eight all the way out to one.
Yep.
Um, it just, it's so tight, I just don't see how you're gonna get a decent swale back there that is gonna be effective.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. And engineers that we have hired, we, we got the topography survey done, so they're, they're really starting to dig into it. And they have, they, they've, you know, shared that comment as well, so.
Okay, good.
So, going back to my old comments about making sure we got the Ts crossed and Is dotted, so it'd be better to have them come back with this corrected to the eighteen feet. If that's okay with you, it's, it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, that's fine. I think the, I think the biggest, you know, concern was if you guys, if we're, if we're on the same page and okay with not having the road go through to Augusta.
It, I understand that the, 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 some of the neighbors want that, but apparently the fire department has no problem with it.
Yep, they've seen the updated plan. Again, it's very similar to how Eagle Drive is set up. And that was approved just a couple of years ago. So, when they get to the T, I think, um, you know, there's still the ability to turn or you park at the T and then you pull hoses. So, um, this is not a great distance for them to travel to, to get to.
And Jeff, you don't have any problems with it?
No, I, I actually kind of like, I prefer, as much as I hate private drives.
Yeah.
Um, I kind of like this arrangement because I think you wanna keep that all the houses that are along Augusta to the east are, are all facing, you know, driveways out. Um, and I think if you were to rotate thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, I think it would look out, out of character there.
Okay, all right.
And Eagle Drive has worked, uh, I knew it was gonna be tight, but it's worked really well. We've had zero problems back there other than the drainage.
Works for you? Okay, so then I think we need, when I think, I believe we'll need a motion to rec, to table the, um, request for the approval of the preliminary condominium plat.
So moved.
We have motion to have a second?
Just to, yep, just to clarify, so when we table, we table to a specific date. So, Jake, do you, would you like to come back to our December meeting with the preliminary plat with the changes to the driveway length?
Get it by next meeting?
And then January, we'll have the rest of the approvals on that meeting, so, okay.
Works for me.
That'll be our December first meeting. Greg's birthday.
Greg's birthday.
He won't let me forget.
No.
I'm making a note, dotting my I's and crossing my J's.
Cross the Ts, yeah, don't be a smart aleck, okay. All right, so I guess we'll postpone until December first.
So, so, John, did you, you moved Randy seconded, was that correct, or?
Scott did.
Scott seconded.
I meant my second to December first, if that's what John.
I, yes, yes, I did. Yes, I do.
Okay, motion, we have a second.
Thank you.
Any discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thanks, see you in a month.
Thank you.
Okay. The item eight E is postponed to a future meeting. F, public hearing to discuss and consider recommendations to the village board for revised conditional use permit. One thirty-five South Main Street, applicant Ziggy's Barbecue. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. You can make your comments, if you'd like. Staff reports, I guess, why don't you wait, Mike?
All right, I'll start, Mike, and then I'll hand it over to you. So, um, we did do a little bit of a background on this at the last meeting. I, I don't think anybody had any concerns. Uh, I know since that time, Ziggy's did host, uh, kind of an anniversary party, um, for their fifth anniversary. And Mike, maybe you can share a little bit of how that went and if you had any lessons learned about layout or, you know, any comments you got from the public. But, um, again, there was a, the original CUP for, um, indoor/outdoor commercial entertainment was approved in twenty seventeen, but it specifically prohibited outdoor music, um, mostly due to concerns from neighboring residents. Since that time, um, seems like most of those, uh, neighbor concerns have been addressed. And the fact that Ziggy's isn't open later than nine P M. is a positive, um, for the outdoor music. So, just, uh, really only have that as my kind of main condition. I wanna make sure that's okay with Ziggy's as well as at this point, um, unless hours would change, that the outdoor music wouldn't, um, be going past nine P M. Um, and then there's a site plan that just kind of shows the layout, which is in the alley between Peaceful Heart and Ziggy's with the stage and.
Right.
Um, alcohol area set up. They've already updated their liquor license to reflect that premise description. Um, but Mike, anything to share from your event a couple of weeks ago, or?
I think it went pretty well. Um, we didn't hear any complaints or, you know. I did go to the Peaceful Heart and she, she, yeah, we heard it. And her employees were having a good time listening to the music and a couple came over. Um, she said she had no problem with it and.
Good.
Some of the neighbors that, you know, we, we didn't notice, they came and sat down and listened to the music for a while. So, it was a fun time and we look forward to having many more, so.
So, you're not seeing any issues at this point?
Nope.
Okay.
And I'm okay with nine o'clock, and that's when we closed anyway, so.
Okay.
Can, I just wanted to come and I actually met with, uh, Doris at the Peaceful Heart, asked her about this. I knew this, and she's, they don't have any problem.
Okay, good.
Hopefully it drives, you know, more business. And I know, um, you know, weekends, you, you mentioned maybe having kind of afternoon music too, when some of the businesses would still be open, so hopefully drives more activity downtown.
Yes, we're looking more so, just having afternoon bands come in, um, you know, not evening. Some people do maybe wanna go to about eight o'clock, they have to get up early. So, we don't wanna really, you know, have too many late-night events, you know.
Do we have any public comments? Anybody wants to talk about this? Anybody have any concerns? Okay, plant commission members, anybody? Seems, go ahead.
I'm glad that, I'm glad it went well. Uh, I think that it's a nice amenity to have in our community. I think that it can generate a lot of fun evenings. My only question or recommendation is I think that we need to kind of screw down a little bit more than, um, a few times per month during the warmer parts of the year, um, to maybe three, no more than three times a month from April to, you know, I don't know, pick a month, September, I don't know. Um, just so that we have something a little bit more clarified going forward. Um, otherwise, I think that it's a solid recommendation. Do you, do you see?
Do you have any idea or do you have any plans, how many times per month you might have, maximum?
I'm guessing generally like two, you know, like.
Okay, so three.
Maybe it might be three if it's a Palme or something, you know, if rain falls in.
Three would be acceptable to you?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I'm certainly not gonna have it every weekend.
Oh, okay, all right, that's kind of a question.
We're looking for family gatherings and, you know, bringing the kids down and having a good time, you know.
Yep, and April through, um.
I guess we'd really need to really limit the months because probably not gonna do it in January outside. I don't know if we need to really call that out, but if it makes.
Oh, I see, just, you just don't even bother with the months.
Just a maximum of three times a month for outdoor events. And I will just mention too, similar to how we've been recording the GDPs and ordinances, we do conditional use agreements now for these CUPs. So, those are actually recorded with the register B's and it carries with the property. So, even if Ziggy's is sold to a different restaurant down the road, the CUP would continue as long as they need the, you know, the same guidelines for number of times a month, nine o'clock, unless they came back for revision, so.
All right, all right, thanks.
Along with that, you know, that reflect the outdoor patio that we have now for playing music throughout the rest of the year. We wanna play some just soft music out there, you know.
Yeah, I think, I mean, this is really just for the amplified music. So, yep, if it's somebody just, you know, coming to do acoustic guitar.
They have, they have some speakers out there. I think we might wanna add that to.
Add that area.
I mean, obviously, patio's closed in the wintertime, so we're not looking.
Right.
Having music in the winter, but summertime, you know, so these are, and, you know, Neil outside. A little extra music in the background is always.
Okay. We've had zero complaints, um, from any neighbors since the beginning of your opening, what, six years ago now?
Correct.
Wow.
Other than sometimes it smells too good in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
But again, if this is a recorded document, we wanna make sure that it's not just Mike, but if he sells his business to somebody else, they don't take advantage of the situation.
Right.
So, we wanna be sure to put in there, um, some sp, specific language about, um, decibel levels or amplified music or, you know, um, those kinds of things. I just, I, I'm not worried about you, I'm worried about the next person.
Right, yeah.
Um, and I just wanna make sure that, that we have something to go back to and say, this is what you can and cannot do.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, the noise ordinance, everyone's subject to that. So, that is refer, I actually put it in a, I think it was the wine reserves, um, conditional use agreement. And our attorney, Matt, actually asked me to pull it out 'cause that, that's kind of already in place for everybody is required to adhere to the noise ordinance and.
So, we're covered on that, is what.
We're covered on that.
Okay.
So, the other things I would list, you know, again, that's gonna be recorded with the property and not just with Ziggy's is, right now, music would not be allowed past nine P M. It would be allowed at maximum times of three times of three events a month. Um, and then, um, music could be played, you know, we could just refer to the whole anywhere on the parcel or on the outdoor patio or the alley space, you know, as described in the conditional use permit site plan.
Or the zoning ordinance? Would it not be the, would it be the conditional use or, ordinance, or would it be?
So, the conditional use permit describes the areas where outdoor music is to be played. So, I would just carry that over to the agreement that gets signed and say, these areas, the patio and then the alley space, and attach the maps. Um, these are the approved areas for outdoor music, so.
Yeah, when we get there, I'm gonna make a motion to recommend what Elise said.
Yeah, as long as that's okay with everyone, but I think.
Well, conditional uses can be revoked.
Right, they can revoke. We do, I mean, this is a revised conditional use permit, so.
Right.
It'll be an update, somebody can come back. But if, um, you know, the future planning commission isn't comfortable with what they're proposing, then you don't have to prove it at that time.
Okay. So, we do understand the motion. I believe the joy has it down.
You gonna close it?
I will eventually.
Sorry, sorry.
I will close the public hearing 'cause nobody else wants to speak, correct? Okay, so public hearing's closed. And you're gonna make the motion, go ahead.
I am. I'd like to make a motion, what Elise said.
Oh, jeez. Okay, we have a motion, and do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second, thank you. We all understand, and I, I do understand exactly what you're talking about, so. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight T, informational-only conceptual presentation by Hofer Development for Autumn Ridge Phase Three through Five.
Just as they're getting up here and getting settled, uh, we did have a neighborhood meeting for Autumn Ridge Phase Three through Five. Last Wednesday, we were here with about a hundred of our friends. Um, we mailed about three hundred and thirty-some-odd letters, um, to people surrounding the, the golf course and some folks in the town too, so it was a good discussion, very civil, kept it to an hour. And then we had some folks kind of linger around to ask questions. So, um, I'll let Glenn and Bruce introduce themselves, kind of walk you through the plan.
That's a conceptual one.
Once they, once they kind of go through, I can go through my staff memo a little bit with some questions and, uh, concerns we have, just things to address, um, moving forward. But I'll kind of let them have, um, kind of walk you through the plan and your vision for neighborhood, for the golf course, some of the things we covered last week.
Good evening, uh, Bruce Holler with Denofree O'Kotkin Associates. Um, I think Glenn and I will probably tag team this with him to, um, talk a little bit about the, uh, golf course itself. But I can get into the, uh, um, the phases three, four, and five layouts and, um, kind of the, the whole concept around each one of those. Um, you might be familiar with Phase Three, um, which is on the east side of MM. Uh, Phase Two is currently just finished up. And, uh, I was out there today, it's paved, grasses are growing. Everything's looking really nice out there, actually. So, uh, soccer field, the field's looking well. Glenn planted some, uh, some trees along the, along the road for screening and, um. So, we wanna kind of complement that with, uh, Phase Three on the other side of the road and, and subsequent phases four and five. Um, fa, again, uh, Phase Three, um, has a total of thirty-eight lots. Um, we brought this forth, um, I think last, maybe two years ago, um, where we, we're gonna go into get the CARP C, uh, approval for Phase Threes as well as Two, uh, but then drop Phase Three out. So, um, since then, Glenn's bought the golf course and has, um, we've come up with this concept of, um, of adding some homes on, in and around the course, um, and adjusting the, the whole count from eighteen to, to twelve holes. Um, from a sewerability standpoint, uh, there's an existing eight-inch stub off of Lexington Drive. Uh, there's a, the city's park. Um, if you look in Phase, what's listed as Phase Five, there's a, there's a stormwater pond that's sort of an upside-down L shape. Uh, just north of that, there's this open green space, which is the parkland. Um, we would be connecting the sanitary sewer at that point and extending it south. So, it'll all be gravity sewer, uh, so no more, no lift station, just, uh, bringing it up to serve Phase, everything in Phase Three, uh, as well as Phase Five. Some of Phase Four, uh, will also go in, into this system. Uh, some of it will, will get, uh, will get directed further north and west. Um, when we, if, when we extend the sanitary for, uh, for, for Phase Five, where it's currently, um, coming into the clubhouse parking lot. Um, again, so we've got, um, a total phase count of, um, so Phase Three, like I said earlier, is thirty-eight lots. Uh, Phase Four, uh, is a, is forty-three. And Phase Five is thirty-one for a total of a hundred and twelve lots. Um, stormwater management, so I've kind of got it outlined. Um, we, we will take care of Phase Three within the, within that orange boundary. And allowing, uh, there's a, there's a quite a large lot, watershed, a little bit, you know, collecting it, you know, which includes Phase Two. which includes Phase Two and area south of Phase Two and Three for a total, there's about a hundred and nine acres that, that comes through Phase Three. And, you know, the, the goal is just to continue that offsite water, bypass it around, and then ultimately it'll work its way through Phase Five into that large pond. And, and then again, I'll, you know, I'll discharge east into the existing Highway fourteen right away. Phase Five, stormwater, you know, again, that, that all, that will get combined together, and that's why that pond is so large, cause we're passing through the offsite water as well as Phase Three water, stormwater. Phase Four, you can kind of see, the way we're dealing with that is we're allowing the water to run through the golf course north to a little tier drop pond, up, adjacent to some, an existing pond that's already there. So, I think from a, from a layout standpoint with the roads, I think we've got a good, good circulation. We've got an entrance directly across from Fox Field between phases, within Phase One, that extends across. And we've got a stub north for, for future, for, in Phase Three, for a future connection into Phase Four. And then we've also got a, a secondary exit, entrance and exit through the existing entryway to the, to the clubhouse currently. So, we've got two, two points of entry and exit, so I think we're covered well with circulation. And, yeah, we, we presented this last week and as, as Elise mentioned, was, felt really favorable. So, that's my little spiel.
So, I'm Glenn Hofer, hopefully you can hear me okay. So, Bruce and I, working with Elise and Jeff, worked hard to come up with a plan that converts the Foxborough Golf Course from an eighteen hole golf course to twelve holes. And I'm, I'm proud and we worked hard, because virtually every homeowner that was on the golf course is gonna remain adjacent to the golf course. And how we're gonna do it is, we're going to eliminate the fairway and green on hole number one, eliminate the tee box and fairway on hole number two, eliminate holes four, five, six, ten, and eleven, and then eliminate the driving range. Then, and I wish we would've had this sketch with all the neighbors, but I think this sketch that Bruce put together shows the new configuration of the twelve hole golf course. So, you'll tee off across the road, we'll keep the four holes across the road, you'll tee off and that'll become hole number one, which is currently hole number twelve. Then you got a nice dogleg right, par four, and then hole number fourteen, which is a challenging par five, will be hole number three. And then you got a nice par three before you cross the road again. Then, I'm going to convert, which is currently hole number seven, which will become hole number five, and we'll shorten that to a par four. Then, hole number eight will become hole number six. And then the nice par five along the community of houses over by Lexington, remain a par five. It'll be a little bit shorter, and that'll become hole number seven. Then, hole number eight will be a par three, where you gotta fly water into a green. What I'll do is use the tee box location from hole number one and the green location from hole number two. And then, hole number three will become hole number nine, and it'll remain kind of the same. It's a short par three along the development, homes along Lexington. Then, the bonus three holes, ten, eleven, twelve, are, were, are currently holes sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. They're, they're nice par four, nice par three, and then come back on a, a nice par four. And, you know, it makes the course nice, because when you're on hole number, future hole number five and the par five, hole number seven, it kinda makes it nice that you can use the other fairways when you're a poor golfer like me. So, a little bit more clarification, when I bought the golf, golf course from Brooke Schmidt, we have an agreement where it's gonna remain an eighteen hole golf course for three years. We got through one year, we got two more years, and then after that, if my plan goes as planned, we'll be looking at transitioning it into a twelve hole golf course.
Thank you guys. So, Greg, I can add a little bit more.
Yes, please.
Background, just to kind of process some of the approvals coming up, and then we have been meeting with Bruce and Glenn for the last probably two or three months through some planning staff meetings that have been, I think, very useful, very detailed conversations about all the different layers to this. So, these, the areas in Phase Three and Four and the golf course that's just directly north of Phase Four is currently in the town of Oregon. There's also a property, Jeff, you could point that out, that is a residential property on the west side of MM, just northwest of the middle school, so they, it's a family actually owns two parcels, one's in the village, one's in the town. The, the home itself is in the town. So, just kind of that town island annexation conversation to consider. Phase Five, that's currently in the town of Rutland, so we've got three municipalities here, just to make things interesting. CARP C approves our urban service area amendments, so that's the areas we're allowed to provide public water and sewer. The area in Phase Four is actually already in our urban service area, I think when some of the homes on Fox Run Court were approved, that area was probably just looped in there. So, Glenn would still need that CARP C approval for Phase Three, Phase Five. Glenn's expressed to us that his desire would be to get all the approvals for Phase Three in hand so that he could start site work by next August, twenty twenty-three, and then approximately a two-year build out or so, depending on the market conditions for that whole phase and development of those lots. We've kind of gone back and forth with this on a staff level about doing approvals and annexation kind of in a piecemeal approach versus looking more holistically at the whole development, looking at some of the remaining golf course lands on the east side of MM. Right now, those are not in the village and, you know, under Glenn's kind of phased approach, it wouldn't be annexed until a later date. We have heard from some neighbors, I think they're largely in support of the change to the twelve hole course, but there are some concerns that, you know, kind of where does this development stop? And how do we have assurance that if we go to sell our house in a year or two and somebody comes across this plan, that they're not gonna say, well, you know, is this guaranteed? Am I still gonna continue to have a golf course hole, you know, in, in my backyard? So, there's a possibility if some of the land is brought into the village, we can put deed restrictions or land use covenants on it, like we have in some portions of the west side of Foxborough, that kind of restrict that use to golfer open space, so that's one thing we can explore, but of course, we can't put deed restrictions on land, we can't require that for land that's not in the village. It could be done on the town side. There are a couple other points that I kinda laid out in our, in my staff memo, and I've shared this with Jeff, our Assistant Public Works Director, Lawrence Striegel, who oversees public, our water and sewer systems, Martin and Matt. And again, we are open to working with Glenn on a phased approach, these are just some of the points and concerns that we've kind of laid out and things we'll need to work through in development agreements. One is stormwater management, so making sure that, since the build out regardless would be over several years, that the stormwater that would be flowing out into the Phase Five area from Phase Three development, that there would be an easement recorded to make sure that that stormwater has, you know, kind of a path that it's allowed to go through, and in case Phase Five doesn't end up getting built or it doesn't get built for some time, that there's not downstream problems that are created. You know, there's some areas that are shown for parkland dedication, I think we figured most of it out, but making sure that that parkland is an area for Phase Four and Five that's gonna be usable to the village and, and kind of makes sense is through our, you know, park planning, which we'll be updating next year. The annexation, Jeff, if you can kind of scroll back to that map and you can add something here if I miss it, but because of that, that town property that we pointed out that's on the west side of MM, near the middle school, if those folks decide that they do not want to annex and we, we as the village and Glenn has not, have not approached them yet, but if they decide they don't wanna annex and Glenn doesn't wanna annex the, the golf course at this time, there's, there's a way that the map can be drawn so that they are not a town island. So, as long as town connects to town and isn't a hundred percent surrounded by the village, it does not, you know, count as a town island. So, there's a way to keep them in the town, but we will not be able to get jurisdiction of Highway MM and do the project with the urban road section, having sidewalks, having a roundabout, we believe is probably where we'll end up, roundabout placed at Pleasant Oak and Wolf Street. But there's a lot of just maintenance, safety considerations. It's honestly just a lot easier if the village has control of our, you know, main arterial roads coming into, into the village. So, like on Highway CC, we have a couple of town parcels, the reason we can't do an urban section there and have multi-use path and everything going down the side is because those town, town parcels are kind of hanging in there and it prevents us from, you know, improving those roads to the way that we expect them to be in the village. So, it's an opportunity to maybe take a look at this and see, can we solve a few different issues here and solve them kind of at once, or is there a plan to solve them as we go here? Is there kind of a, a date that we can aim for to have the remainder of this land annexed into the village or is this something we wanna look at doing sooner? Again, I kinda talked through the CARP C approvals, so I think Glenn's on board with this. This is very common that CARP C sees a full concept plan, but they understand that work is done in phases and over time, so that would definitely be included. The Fox Field MM intersection, Bruce kind of pointed out, but I believe there is, there'll be a need for a traffic study there that's kind of the crest of a hill as you're coming in from the town and in from Brooklyn. So, seeing if a stoplight, stop sign, some kind of signal would be, you know, a good solution for that neighborhood once there's more development on the east side of MM. Other random things that will just, you know, they're not insurmountable, but things to work through. The liquor license right now is just in the town, so if you've ever golfed, you, you know, you don't see the beer carts on the village side. So, some of those things down the road, kind of getting that figured out. Plumerie plat, final plat, we've been talking a lot about plats today, but looking at maybe the Plumerie plat shows the full concept plan and then it's final plated in phases, once there's more details known about, you know, the ponds and roads for each, each phase. And then, just the fact that every time we do kind of approvals for another phase, it's another round of neighborhood meetings, you know, increased time for both the developer and the village expenses just for legal fees, working through updated agreements, so just things we kind of wanna lay out on the table. Again, we're, we're willing to work with the developer to find a solution that works for everybody. We certainly wanna make sure we're taking an opportunity though to address longer term problems and issues that have existed. This is kind of our chance to maybe clean up some of those things on the front end rather than kind of having to catch them over the next eight to ten years as these phases are built out. So, I think, Jeff, is there anything else you wanted to add from?
Questions?
The only thing I thought of that I've just, when, in, when Bruce was talking about, this is gonna be storm, stormwater here for treatment of Phase Four. We'll definitely have to get much tighter easement descriptions, access descriptions than what we have for this pond and this pond, which there, there are easements out there, but it's very unclear as far as what, who's responsible for what, especially since they'll kind of serve as a dual purpose, as a water feature for the golf course, as well as a stormwater feature for.
Especially that areas in the town that'll be.
Right, exactly, and it's outside our, I mean, and it's okay, we can have it outside of our jurisdiction, but.
I guess the only other thing to point out in the plan, and then we can turn it over to you guys for questions, but the maintenance shop parcel and then also the, the single family lot parcel. So, Glenn's proposing once the work on Phase Four and Five, and I guess it's really just Phase Five where the maintenance shop is, but to move and build a new maintenance shop on the north end of Fox Run Court, something that would be accessible off Wolf Street. So, obviously, that would be its own parcel, site plan approval, architectural view, all of that, but that's what that call out is for. And then, there's also a new single family lot, just a standard, probably SR four lot that they're showing that's existing within the village, so that could be, you know, applied for separate from these other processes. But there is room that wouldn't interfere with any of the golf course holes to add a single family lot there. I have heard from the neighbor that's right across the street, of course, they're not too excited about losing their golf course view, but that area is outside of the kind of green space, open space restriction for that side of the golf course. So, that's again, another review for another day, but just wanted to point those things out on the map.
Bruce, I think I heard you say that you were gonna be able to get all of Phase Three, including the bottom of the hill on the south end of Gravity back to Lexington. I can't read any of your elevations on this little plan here, but.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, it'll require some fill, to bring the lots up.
Bring the lots up.
So that we can, yeah, make that happen.
That's pretty low.
We kinda, we kinda, it's funny, cause you mentioned that, cause we kinda did that same thing in Phase Two. As we made, as we make the bend on Ridge View, we all, that was, that was kind of a similar situation where we had to artificially raise those lots with some fill to get enough cover for the sanitary sewer to be able to serve those.
You're digging a full basement dump sewer, not a, a grinder pump?
Yeah, not a grinder pump, no.
You'd be digging through a lot of hill to get it back to Lexington too.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, we looked at that and I, yeah.
I wanted to make sure I heard that, right? And then, question for Glenn, it says on your, your memo here that the twelve hole golf course would allow for improved maintenance and operations and would be successful for the long term. Maybe enlighten us a little more, you know, what a twelve, what a twelve hole golf course does differently and how that makes it.
Well, well, one is, the golf course has, has been kind of depreciated. It's had some tough times with COVID and then with the irrigation system, it's got three pumps and only one of them's working now, so it's kind of on the last legs. So, I wanna, af, after the three years and hopefully when we get this approved, we'll spend more money on, on the golf course and the irrigation needs to be upgraded. The greens are really in pretty good shape, the tee boxes need to be upgraded a little bit and, and better irrigated. But, you know, so I wanna invest in some money to upgrade the golf course. And then, once it's a twelve hole golf course, cause it's not utilized to a full extent now, it's not that busy. So, I think it'll get busier as a twelve hole golf course, plus maintaining twelve holes is a lot easier than maintaining eighteen holes. So, I think it's gonna be both, it's gonna, you know, we're gonna improve, you know, the golf course with some capital. And then, two, I'm open in believing that, you know, as the village grows, it's, when it gets to be a little better product, it's gonna get busier. And then, three, you know, twelve holes, like I said, is, is, is less expensive to maintain than, than eighteen. know, 12 holes, like I said, is, is, is less expensive to maintain than, than 18. And what I'm excited about, Mike Kurag is subleasing the golf course. He was the superintendent for Brook and really is excited about this. He's done, he was at Jefferson when they converted that from an 18-hole golf course to a, I think a 13-hole golf course. But he's, he's excited about the long-term view of this, this course. And I, I'm confident he's, he's going to, you know, my goal is, is, you know, I just want to play golf. I don't want to operate a golf course. I just want to rent it back to, to Mike. But what, what I'm also excited about is what I feel is really successful currently is men's league. I'm, I'm playing the Wednesday night men's league. Started that two years ago and I had a lot of fun with it. And with the 12-hole golf course, because we just play nine holes and then we rotate back night and front night from week to week. But I've got it kind of figured out with Mike that we can play nine holes one week and then play a different nine with the bonus three holes. So it'll, it'll kind of a little bit feel like an 18-hole golf course. You won't always be playing the same nine every week in league. But I really think that the league is really, in my opinion, real successful right now. And I'm open and believing that when it's 12 holes, it even is, is more successful.
I, I have to apologize to staff. At least as, as you were talking about this project and the plates started to spin and you kept talking and the circus music kept getting louder, I lost track of all of the things that were in the air. I'm struggling to wrap my head around this. There's multiple municipalities, there's a change in the golf course, there's three phases, but you only want to do one right now?
Well, yeah.
And, and you're going across multiple phases with your storm water and you're exiting, your second exit is I think onto a private drive? Can we even do that?
Fox Run is...
Isn't, isn't Foxborough a private drive?
Foxborough, no, this is public right up to this point.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, Fox Run Court.
We, we're allowed to plow right up to that property line, right Glenn?
Co- correct.
Not anymore over.
And then part of the plan is that we create the roadway onto the parking lot of Foxborough Golf Course, which I own.
Okay. I, I just...
There's a lot here.
There's a lot.
There's a lot here.
Lot layers.
Well, there is. And one of the, I'm, you're trying to bring storm water from phase three down through phase five. And am I, am I missing something? How, how are you bringing your sanitary from phase three? Where's that going?
Zooming on that area here.
Show me where it goes to.
So it comes down here.
That's what I thought.
This is through the...
Yep.
Driving range.
Yep.
This is the maintenance shop now.
Yeah.
Comes over here, comes down, over here to here.
Okay, that's what I understand.
Hawthorne.
But now you still, there's some, still discussion that you may not want to annex the, the course itself. So then you are crossing through the township with the sanitary and with the water, correct?
Correct.
Which I understand the property owner is the same, but the...
There, well, there would be, there would be easements.
Okay, I, fine.
Yeah, we, we did actually very something, well, I'm not saying I like this idea, but I mean, I mean, it's not, I, it's, it's, it works. I guess we've, we've asked Bruce, you know, we trust Bruce. Bruce has done a lot of work with the village, with Bergamot and with, and with Glenn. So I do trust his instinct and his design ability implicitly. And, and he's done a lot of work to see that this works. But obviously when this comes through to design, we get a very tight scrutiny of design on this.
Oh, yeah.
But like, a lot of people don't know this, but through Phil Peterson's property, we've got a sewer line that runs right through his field for Bergamot. Yeah. And it was, I, I remember the same thing, thinking how do we...
Why wasn't it even done? But that, did you, again...
How do we do that? Yeah.
Why do we keep making the same mistakes? So let's not make the same mistakes. And my, my concern is, you know, again, Lee's, Lee's kind of alluded to this, people along the course, you know, in the future, if that's not annexed, we can't have any control over it, so to speak. Not that we want control, but we want development control.
We have limited, limited control. We can freeze zoning for two years in the town. You know, obviously the ETJ CSM's come across our desk, but, you know, development really wouldn't be possible in the town at the density that, you know, we see in the village because the town doesn't really...
There's not enough to subdivide.
But regardless, regardless, what I'm making is that...
There's a peace of mind, I think, the neighbors are hoping for and that this plan has shown, whether it's Glenn or somebody else that builds this out, that what they're being told today, you know, will, will happen and will not change in a major way so that they feel comfortable with the investment.
I get that. Again, you know, there's, this is just a conceptual, I'm, I am kind of lost in this whole thing. And I, you know, I, two years, there was, there was some discussion about this two years ago?
Just phase three.
Yeah, phase, when we were looking at the phase two approval, phase two and three were attached to each other and then...
To me, that's not part of the golf course.
And at that time Glenn did not own...
I, I know.
The golf course. In fact, we had the current, the previous owner of the golf course here opposing phase three, as well as a lot of the homeowners that were in the presidential neighborhoods down here.
Correct, yeah, down there.
So that's when Glenn said, okay, I'm not going to do phase three right now. I want to focus and finish phase two. So that's, that's the history there.
Well, wouldn't you, wouldn't it make sense that if, you know, phase three, I understand that, that's all nice and neat and you put in lots and make money and all that kinds of stuff?
We requested the developers to seriously consider it would be our preference to annex.
Yep.
There are some things, just in all truth and honesty, there's some things that are politically motivated for, for annexing versus non-annexing. One is a very expensive liquor license for the golf course. That's with the town. That may or may not be transferable to the village. The other one is he may not be able to be allowed to annex if this person up here does not want to be annexed. Because if he were to annex the rest of the golf course, it would, could create an island. So it, it's a, it's a cobweb.
Seven-headed dragon.
I also go back to the project that we just approved with Veridian. When it came through the last time, we sort of put an expectation on that previous owner and developer to come in with an overall plan and concept that wasn't sort of piecemealed together. And, and right now it's a concept that you've got that could work, but until you have, until you have it under control and, and everything under some of these plates simplified, I don't know if I'd feel comfortable moving forward with this.
I want to see when, you know, to me, phase five is just the wrong, that's the, when I say it's five, that's the fifth thing to be done. I don't think it's, it should be the fifth thing to be done. Because you bring a utility through there, you're bringing storm water through there. And, and, and you're not dealing with it. If you're developing phase three, and all you're going to deal with is just dig a line through and run your sewer and water through. That doesn't make any sense to me. You're not dealing with the, the real problem that we always have in this village is storm water. And I, I'm still trying to wrap my head around a 12-hole golf course. I've done some reading on it and I, I know one of the reasons why you do exactly what we're doing here. I, it's...
You get a lower score.
Yeah, you do. Yeah, you do. But I also have read some of the reasons...
Yeah.
That are financial. So...
Yeah.
So I don't, what do you, we're jabbering here.
Phil Gregg, I'm going to, and I said this when we had the plan, I, I don't like the piecemeal part of it.
Okay.
That's, and I know that the commissioner has had to deal with that in the past. It's not really a pleasant thing.
It isn't, no. And it, in, in this case, we're dealing with storm water and utilities that I, I feel have to be accomplished prior to some of the other phases. So it has to come in together and be planned together.
What did we have for three when that was part of one and two on the other side?
Well, that's...
Because we didn't have five at that point. So we weren't going that way with anything.
I don't know where it was going.
Yeah. I mean, I think at the time it was, you know, there's the retention, detention ponds, kind of, they were shown very similar to how they're shown now for phase three. But then there was a, I forgot how many inch pipe that was going to be, you know, coming out onto the downstream property owner, which at the time was Brook. And understandably, he wasn't too thrilled about that. Bruce, maybe you could talk about what, what would the interim kind of solution look like if phase three is built out and, you know, the, the pond and everything isn't in place in phase five for several more years? What does that interim couple of years look like from the water path perspective? You know, where, how wide an easement would need to be?
Yeah, well, if, if nothing's happening in phase five, we're just going to discharge the water where it's going now. And it'll go right where, it'll continue to go where it's going now.
Kind of a theories of ponds, right? Kind of, no?
We wouldn't need to. We wouldn't need ponds because we're, we're discharging, we're treating our water in phase three per the ordinance and passing through the offsite water, just in, in bringing it to the same location that we're currently going to. Nothing, if, if nothing's happening on phase five, there's, it's still being run as a golf course or, you know, so there really wouldn't be any, any need to do anything in the phase five area.
And then as far as the sewer, we could, I guess, I, I thought it was a nice feature to have gravity sewer, but we could just go at the lift station like we conceptually had approved on phase four, uh, three previously.
Which we don't, I don't, Jeff, you, you haven't been opposed to lift stations, but I, I know in the past we didn't like them for obvious reasons.
I don't mind them. Uh, uh, well, I mean, submersible lift stations have come a long ways in the last twenty, twenty, thirty years. And they're, they're all accessed from the surface. All the pumps go on slides. In fact, it's very, very, much more common, very compact, so, and more reliable than the old underground can station that you have in your neighborhood there. John?
It's wonderful.
Still works.
Yes.
So far.
Oh, yeah.
I've been down on those. I know what they're like. I don't know. It's, I don't have anybody else say anything else here. It's just kind of, we're all kind of mumbling about it. We don't know what to do about it. It's bottom line.
Well, I have started kind of a master of schedule to get, you know, the phase, if the phase three approval is going to move forward through the next nine months, there's time for everything to get approved before the end of next summer. But we'd certainly be having more, you know, planning staff meetings. I think probably the, one of the next steps would be some kind of development agreement, you know, cost reimbursement agreement, but also trying to memorialize this concept plan as, as best as possible. And I guess just nailing down the, the annexation decision so that we have a path moving forward in one way or another. If it's annexed in pieces or, you know, annexed in whole, kind of, what are the consequences of either decision? If we need to pull the neighbors in the middle school, you know, do we need to have that conversation first, see what their response would be, and then make a decision from there? So we'll certainly be following up with the developer, but wanted to get this in front of you before, you know, we get too far down the road. And since we have that neighborhood meeting, just wanted to catch you up on the comments and some of the, you know, questions that the neighbors had.
Well, okay. This is all, you know, I've, I've seen this in, basically it all kind of hit me in the last week. Okay. So it's hard to draw an opinion on it right now. I have some strong opinions about certain things on this, one of which is the annexation and one of which, you know, I, I understand we, we don't want to take two parcels that are sitting there, but, you know, it's about time. Maybe we got to talk to those folks. Or maybe the applicant wants to make, talk to those folks.
I agree.
Figure out some way to get this taken care of. Because it's not going to go away. Let's get it done. And it's not our responsibility to take care of it. So let's get that done. I'm asking you to get it done, sir. And then look at the possible annexations because doing all this with, without any real, you know, it's, 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 it's part of another township or something. Well, no, no. If, if, I want to, if, if we're going to have this, you're going to promise that we're going to do all this new layout of this course. Let's make sure it's going to be done and it's going to be within the, not control, but the client control of the village, under the, under the review of the village.
Any other comments?
You guys are all sitting back for your mics. Come on, get up here.
I think if we don't have a full plan laid out, then everything needs to stand on its own until we have a full plan.
Thank you. That make sense, guys? We're going.
All right. Stay tuned. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't know, we can't, I, there's some folks here that you got, anybody want to discuss it, talk? I see some folks from the area, from the neighborhood.
I'd like to say something.
I, I, I'm sure you got to come and give me your name. It's, this is, we do this just to be nice.
Sorry.
Because it's not a public hearing, so...
Hi, I'm Jennifer Johnson. I live on 930 Harding Street. I actually live on the corner of phase three. As you look at the map up there, as it, go around the curve and I'm that first house on the curve, right there. So I'm just wanting to try to understand how that all works. It looks like from now, because it's changed since, when it initially came forth, that's going to be all a retaining pond, more or less, before it was supposed to be like, um...
Harp.
Yes.
Yep, that's been changed.
So if that becomes a retaining pond, similar to the one across the street, all the water that runs from down Harding Street and all the houses that butt up behind me, the wooded area, if they are building that pond area up like they did across the street, how is that water going to get into that without flooding my yard and the houses behind me?
This, this water is, these ponds have nothing to do with your water...
Mm-hmm.
Coming off of your properties and all of your neighbors' properties. These ponds are strictly for treating and, and handling the water from the new lots.
Okay.
Yeah.
But...
And you're right, but there's a lot of water that comes down here. There's culverts over here. I think I talked to your husband.
My father.
Your father. That's my apologies. And there's still, you know, a lot of water through here. Bruce, you've kind of looked at that, correct? There was, there was a skepticism, I think would be the best term, that, that that water could drain from this area out and into this area. Could, would you be able to comment to that to help? Because, because there is a lot of water. I mean, I think, you know, if you look at the topography, this is all low through back here.
Yeah, the way, the way I understand it and the way I've, I've seen it out in, out in the field is it currently, the water currently, currently kind of cuts across the, the back of those lots, based on what I've seen in the field and then what the contouring, contouring and, and the maps, the mapping shows. So the idea would be to, you know, that the, that runoff in the town, in the back of those town lots there would, would continue to drain as it does. And it would just be, instead of, you know, the, if I'm, there are two culverts under Harding, well, there are three total, I think. So instead of them releasing water and traveling through what's currently Glenn's field, it'll, it'll run down up the east, the, the north side of Harding, it'll go in an easterly direction. And then we've, we've set aside some prop, some, some of the land in Glenn's to... some, some of the land in Glenn's to, to allow that water to continue to drain in its current pattern.
So, it won't go through here?
It will, yeah, ultimately, it, it will, that's, that's where, that's where it leaves.
Right, I mean, so, so if this stagnant, or whatever, whatever sits back in here, can it gravity drain from here, under the roadway, and into here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that is, the, the drainage, the elevations, um, the drainage elevations will be maintained as best we can, so that, to keep that water, to allow that water to continue, because it's, it's, it's very flat, as you all know, and, and so we're basically just setting those culverts on this existing ground, and to collect the water.
Right, but I, I do, I do agree with, with her father when he was out, when, you know, I've driven out here, it does look like this is actually a high point here, and that's probably what causes a lot of this back here to, to just, if this may be a kettle, if you will, um, and, you know, I, I personally have looked at the topography as precise as you guys have, but, but I do think, you know, there has, there's water that's coming from here, over to here, and into here, is there a ditch along this roadway?
Not currently, but once we put the, uh...
The pond in there.
The pond in, it'll naturally create that other side of the ditch.
Okay, so, so there would be a ditch, and that would, and, and that's just all runoff that's already coming through there now, but it seems to kinda just fill this area back here, um, and I guess my, I'm asking is, you know, is there swale through here and culvert that can get that water out?
Yes, that's the intent, when we, you know, we'll have the opportunity, when we regrade that area, if there is in fact a high point there now, we can, or we can knock that down and, and get it into the culverts, and get the water through.
Yeah, this is another project that, well, all of our projects, but we do, as, as Greg has hinted at, not hinted, said, we, we really screwed dice very tightly for, for storm water, because there's been problems that have occurred over the years, I think we're, we're much, much better than we used to ever be, just because I think there's a lot more scrutiny on what is being done. But I, I do think this is, you know, solving, you know, just as much as you guys were able to solve a lot of things with what was done over here, I think, hopefully, your design and your, your conceptual and your final design will address this whole area through here.
Yeah, and, and the, kinda my, my, my approach with, with the phase three water runoff from the lots is to, um, the outlet for the ponds, the ultimate outlet, outlet where, you know, the ponds will collect everything, um, the idea is for that, the, that we route the, route the water from the pond to the north and east, so that the water that's collected from the lot, the new lots, um, isn't getting discharged to the east, you know, down in that area, it's being rerouted up towards the back of whatever the, the lot eighty-five.
So, this, this is your wet pond, right?
Yep.
And then this is your infiltration?
Correct.
Right, and so there's technically should be no outlet from that, you know, with the exception of higher, higher intensity storms, right?
Right, and that's been sized, at, at the time, we left this alone, we, well, we, we added this pond when there was a suggestion or a recommendation that we, that we, we provide volume control, where we, we infiltrate through the fifty-year storm event, and so, you know, that's why, that's what the, what the phase two pond is sized for, now that's well above and beyond the, um, the current ordinance, so, um, you know, so it's theoretically providing that additional, we're hanging on to that additional water that we generate.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Thanks, Bruce.
Good evening, I'm Barbara Zalki, I live at seven oh three Pleasant Oak Drive, so I live to the west, right next to the middle school, and, um, kind of Glenn actually added that lot across the street from our house recently, he had repeatedly been telling people that there would be, that nobody that was currently on a golf course would stop being on a golf course, and I know I don't own property adjacent to the golf course, but I have been across from a golf course for a lot of years, so I have, I did speak to Glenn directly, and I told him that I was unhappy that he's putting that lot there, um, and I would just appeal to you to say, I really would like to see that lot not accepted as part of the plan, I think Elise said that would be dealt with at a later time.
Yeah.
Well, it's already in the village, so it would be a separate approval from kinda these larger, you know, annexations of land in the town, so that can be something, you know, if that's a proposal he moves forward with, there'll be, um, you know, a separate hearing and letters and all of that.
Okay, so separate letters will go out in a separate hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd probably be a CSM, right?
Yeah, likely be a CSM, so...
Sure, bike survey map.
Thank you.
Yeah, a, a redrawn map of the, the parcel, the golf course parcel on that side, but yeah, we'll make sure to keep you in the loop if that's what they move forward with.
Just wanted to make you aware of that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for waiting.
Anyone else? Okay. Proceed. Uh, information only, conceptual presentation by QuickTrip for a new convenience store and car wash, Janesville Street.
All right, so I am QuickTrip tonight. Troy, um, from QuickTrip is actually at another planning commission meeting across the state for a sign variance or something, so we do have them available by phone if needed, if there's any questions I can't answer, um, but I'll just give you kind of an overview and try to answer any questions, and then we'll be back for likely a site plan and conditional use permit at the December first meeting, so, uh, QuickTrip is proposing to purchase and develop a site, uh, directly across from their store on Janesville and Wolf, um, this is the commercial site that is in the front of the Lake Stone Prairie Brook Apartments, so this is a, kind of a, it's really similar to a concept plan that Lake Stone actually shared to sort of prove that something like a gas station might fit, um, I think they were always hoping that it would work out with QuickTrip, and the timing has finally aligned that, uh, QuickTrip's ready to build a new store with a car wash in, in the village, um, they would be closing their store across the street after the store would open, so they would do something similar to when they purchased, uh, Staffen Go, um, kind of kitty corner from this intersection, so they pull out the pumps, they pull out the canopy, they de-restrict the land so it cannot be a gas station or a convenience store, and then typically, they sell the building to somebody else who either redevelops the site or rents out the building for some other commercial purpose.
Pull the tanks.
Yep, yep, they pull all the underground tanks, so that happened pretty shortly after QuickTrip bought Staffen Go on the other corner, so, uh, pretty standard canopy, um, there's some pictures with some elevations on the, on the pages to follow, um, some of their newer store formats, this looks really similar, I think, to the store at, um, M and PB in Verona near the new Costco, so a lot of brick, there would just be one car wash bay, um, one of the concerns we had kinda always, if a car wash came in here in a convenience store, is obviously we have some residential nearby, some new stuff and some existing residential, and they said right now, their car washes are available twenty-four seven, they're typically not used overnight, but that's something that they would be open to restricting the hours, and we could address that in a conditional use permit agreement, um, standard, you know, lighting, landscaping, uh, there's, all the stormwater is already addressed on the large stormwater management pond that's near the entrance, uh, there are two access points, one further east on Janesville, and then kinda through that split entrance that you see being built right now for the apartment, so, once the stoplights are delivered and installed, that'll function as a four-way stop and be another point of access for, um, for folks visiting QuickTrip, so, yep, a couple of the elevations, obviously, they'd have to go through all of the, you know, sign permit approval, and, um, I did send them the monument sign that Culvers is gonna have, just for a similar scale and design, so they could see, they know we're, you know, not approving any new pylon signs, um, but if you have any comments or questions, I can pass forward to QuickTrip before they come back in December, I'd be happy to do so.
Nope, I don't think so.
I got a few, actually, um, lot coverage, it seems like we're pushing the lot coverage on this.
Yeah, so, I told them they might need to be doing a GDP if they're over the impervious area coverage, I think it's seventy or seventy-five percent for planned business, um, needs to be, that's kinda your max impervious, and so if you're above that, you would need to be doing planned development zoning and ask for that flexibility, so, that's why I don't know if they're gonna do a GDP and SIT or site plan and conditional use permit, so they send me kind of the final site plan, and we get that calculation.
And then the village board's parking requirement, seems like we're way over parked, thirty-two parking stalls.
Mm-hmm.
Something that they need to look at, uh, truck traffic is something, I'm not worried about the pumps and getting a semi in there for that, I'm worried more about like the trash, it seems like if you've got a, a trash pickup, how do you get out of there? You know, I'm assuming it's front load, yeah, but take a look at that radius, John.
Yeah, I know. Like this nose, like that, that nose right there.
Yeah, um, so anyways, just some of that truck traffic stuff.
Yeah.
Snow is the other one, if we're gonna be, if we're talking about all those details, something is, what do you do with snow removal on something like this?
Yeah.
Push it into the pond, you know?
More than likely.
Yeah.
More space than they have across the stra, or, I mean, across the street for snow removal, but, yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah. One suggestion I did make to them, I didn't see an update on this plan, sorry to interrupt you, John, but, uh, just a pedestrian access sidewalk along the east property line, um, for folks that might be coming from the hotel or the apartments, uh, your other east. Down there, along the main, that entrance, so having a sidewalk that kinda runs north-south, and then a crosswalk, um, in front of kinda that car wash entrance, so, um, people who are coming from that side of town, if they're coming from the hotel, or, um, those neighborhoods that they wouldn't be crossing across that driveway access, um, on that eastern access point.
All right. Also, just so you know, I mean, this also involves the tearing down, removal of the two single-family homes.
It does.
And that quad, which I think there's...
They're all vacant now, maybe just one.
I think there's one holdout, but, yeah, they're, those will all be taken out, probably in the next couple of weeks.
Didn't realize that, okay.
Yeah.
I thought those were gonna stay.
No, those, those are very old homes and...
I thought when Lake Stone came in, and, and this, maybe my memory is wrong, and we brought this up about a gas station, I thought they said that they weren't gonna put a gas station.
I think they, they didn't know.
Yeah, they showed us on there.
I remember seeing the concept, but I thought that they said, no, we're not, so...
No, they said, they didn't, they didn't know for sure.
No, it, it, that or a fast food or whatever, but, but they had it on, yeah.
Never mind.
Okay, move on.
Thank you.
Number I, extraterritorial jurisdiction, extraterritorial, extraterritorial jurisdiction, review for certified survey map for the Jenkins property located near forty, fifty-four-hundred Netherwood Road, Town of Oregon, and we, again, typically on this, do not show any opposition, correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
The motion is such. To not oppose it.
I'd make, make that motion.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most, opposed, motion carried, uh, item J, extraterritorial jurisdiction review, certified survey map for the Schultz property located at forty-five, forty-nine Country, County Highway eight, Town of Oregon, same item.
So moved.
Okay, we have any discussion, are you second, by Mr.?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, uh, for information only, conceptual discussion regarding Faith Lutheran signage request, Elise.
Are you Peter?
Yes.
Okay, nice to meet you.
Ah, hi there.
Been back there waiting and waiting.
Yes, thank you for your patience, um, so why don't you start, just kinda maybe give an overview of why you're coming forward with this request, and then I have some, some thoughts on how this might work and precedence, and how we can kind of go forward with this, if you all are, are open to these signs.
Sure, uh, my name is Peter Beal, I'm on the church council at Faith Lutheran Church, which is just right down the road.
Yep.
Uh, we've been in this location for a little over thirty years, if my records are accurate, and just going to community events, we've been hearing that a lot of people don't know that we're really back there, so we're just trying to get a little bit more visibility, so, we're just looking to get a little bit of signage out on Janesville Street.
Okay. At least had something here for you, look, yes, there you go.
So, um, yeah, Peter provided us kinda these photoshopped images of what this might look like, so right now, we have our public street signs, um, and then we do have our historic district emblem on top, um, we have typically not added things to our public, um, public streets to wayfind for things that aren't public buildings, um, one thing I did take a look at in, just our zoning code, is right now, all of our churches, all of our public buildings, our museum and all the schools are in institutional zoning, it shows up as blue on our zoning map, um, I do think if you all are open to this, um, we can kind of limit any other requests for, uh, signs of this type to institutional uses, and not have, you know, Mary Jane's Hair Salon that's run out of her house, you know, five blocks this way, or other things that are added to these signs, but they're really limited to these institutional uses in the village, which are very few, and most of the other churches, for example, are on, I think, more major roads, so they, they do have increased visibility, I don't think this is gonna be a request that comes up very often, um, it's a little outside of what our sign code allows, just because it's a public, you know, street sign, and we, we're typically not touching those very much, but if you all are okay with this kind of scale, and that limitation of just the institutional zoning, um, uses to, to have this, then Jeff and I will work with him on kind of the design, and then get, um, you know, installation, production, all of that kinda coordinated with Public Works.
The only other one I can think of would be the Presbyterian Church out on North Bergamot Boulevard.
They came in a number of years ago and asked about putting a sign out, down on CC, and our zoning, our sign code at the time didn't allow off property.
Right, we, yeah, we still don't allow the off-premise signs, right now, you all do kind of a sandwich board that's set up on Sundays, I know sometimes it's, it's left there overnight, someone forgets to grab it, or it's windy and it flops over, and so, um...
And they're usually in the right of way, which isn't legal either.
Right, so this is something that hopefully be a little bit safer.
Wayfinding signs that are...
Right, it'd be out seven days a week versus just on Sundays when people might...
And I will say, I think, um, that, a while back, when we were working on the downtown parking and signage originally, um, Faith Lutheran had kind of offered to allow that to be overflow parking for downtown parking, that's, that was my memory, I don't know if that's offer's still good, but they've, they've shown...
Very neighborly, very downtown neighbors.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, you know, they've, they've kind of shown that they wouldn't be hauling away cars if, if Maria's was busy or not on the night back when Maria's was busy, and, and all that type of stuff, so...
Well, again, memory, bad for me, um, I thought that when we were going through the zoning code the last time, there was something about when the Supreme Court made a decision about signs on properties, that this was something...
Content.
Something about that.
We can't dictate content, so we can't say no to one group because of what their sign says, we can only dictate location. We can only dictate location and size and that, but it can't, we really can't be, as long as it's not offensive.
You may wanna check with, uh, village attorney, see if we can can regulate, regulate the sign based on the zoning district.
Right.
Right.
Seems like what we're maybe trying to do.
We do, we do regulate signs based on zoning district, we, our whole code is based off of
Right, yeah, there's certain signs that aren't allowed downtown versus-
This is an off, off, uh-
It's an off-premise sign in a zoning district, which would definitely cause a little grief.
And it's also on a public, public post and so you might wanna find out about that then.
Right, or maintaining the sign, so.
Kind of, how do you, you, that's your memory's good, that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, well certainly-
Forgot about the gas station, that was three months ago.
Yeah, no, I'll certainly run this by Matt if we kinda move forward and see if there's even just, you know, once the sign gets, you know, if it gets damaged or, um, you know, it gets in disrepair, you know, do they, will they replace it? So we'll work through some of those details, but wanted to kinda run this by you.
I don't think anybody's-
I used to live in this neighborhood, these guys are good neighbors.
Oh, yeah.
Can we just have a village sign that says overflow public parking at Faith Lutheran Church?
I like how you're thinking.
I'm not sure we will.
That was actually part of the plan.
Was it really?
Yeah.
It was, I remember that, Joe.
Wow, okay.
Well, we'll see if there's a way to make it work.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Alright, thanks Peter, I'll be in touch.
We're gonna try to do something with you, so thanks for stopping, waiting so long.
Thank you.
Uh, community developer part, status of projects.
Is that time of year where everyone's trying to wrap up things? I think Glenn was saying they, I didn't know this yet, but they, uh, sounds like they put on their second layer of asphalt, so that's good.
For the parking lots?
No, no, up at, up at the Phase Two D of, uh, so what is that Ridge View? I know that Highlands and Netherwood is getting their second lift, uh, Phase Three is getting their second lift on Saturday. And I do believe Phase, or the, uh, Five D of Bergamot, which is connecting Interlock and around there, is also being done in the next week and a half. So there's a lot of paving been going on.
Usually they've only got a couple more weeks left.
Yep, yep, paving this time of year is strictly weather dependent and we've been very blessed, so.
Yes, we have.
But that's, most of it is just really tying up the projects while we still have some good weather. And, um, hopefully you guys see some progress going on at JC Park.
Looks nice. I still understand why we, why we have four softball, that's fine.
That's why we have what?
Four softball diamonds.
Or baseball.
Baseball.
Baseball and softball.
Okay, we did those apparently.
We have three out there, plus stocks.
Well, we did, didn't we, yeah. It's a very nice looking for, it's, it looks nice.
Once we are able to open it up to public, people will really enjoy walking around there and it's, yeah, it's going really well.
Nice looking developer place.
Yeah. Any questions on any projects? I wish I could say that we knew when the street lights were gonna go in down at, uh, Janesville and Perry Parkway.
I get asked that all the time.
I know, I, and I was sitting there yesterday, or two days ago, for like five minutes waiting for some traffic and I'm just like, I was mad at myself.
I was there the other day.
Big improvement even without the light.
I came back to the office and called my voicemail just to complain to myself.
Write yourself a nasty email.
I wrote myself a nasty email.
It's just, it's just backward, that's the issue?
Yeah, it's, it's all just supply and demand, um, or supply issue, supply chain issue, so.
Okay, upcoming meetings, you know where they are, December first, very important date, and then, uh, January fifth. Plan, and then planning staff meetings, ah, dude, no, have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Martin, any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Nate, you didn't say a word tonight.
I was listening.
Thank you for coming. Oh, yeah. They're not happening, they're not happening.
It was on the phone. So I bet you it's like, well, I bet you like one right now.